If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. If you could please just join me for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time too, I'd like to open this meeting to public comment. But I see no public. And so we will continue on with our board discussion regarding the proposed 2014-15 school district budget. Ray, you have some information for us on revenues?
On revenues, yes. There were a couple of questions that were introduced on Monday evening. One of them had to do with grant programs and the funding level that we were projecting for them. We came in with a conservative revenue estimate of $250,000 for grant programs for next year. Remember that grants are what we call an enterprise fund. What you collect is what you can spend. Grants do not have any tax impact. But they do tend to increase our bottom line for the total operating budget. The operating budget is made up of the general fund, that is the taxation piece. It's made up of food service fund, our Fund 21, which is again another enterprise fund. What is brought in in the way of revenue is all that the program can spend. And grants are pretty much the same thing. The... When thinking about grants, it's... I don't know if we want to call it an art as much as a science. It isn't absolutely necessary to be dead on with respect to what the real toll is going to be. Again, given the parameters of only being able to spend what you bring in. Over the past couple of years, when we were taking a look at sequestration and its potential effects and the like, we as a group decided that we were going to become more conservative in our estimates of grant revenues. There was a concern that was introduced with respect to employees being paid through grants. And yes, that is true. However, the employees are paid through the grant or through Fund 22 and are not captured in the Fund 10 or the general fund budget. So there's no exposure there. If you do have your revenue sheets, I'd ask you to take a look at them and take a look at the bottom line, the appropriation lines. This year, our total appropriation is $36,616,091. That's what we're operating under or with for the entire operating budget. Next year, the 14-15 school year, with a $250,000 estimate for grants, we're increased to $38,217,000. So we're up well over a million and a half dollars in appropriation level. If we were to increase grant funding... And I'm just going to throw out some numbers here. Grants right now are made up of pretty much of Title I funding. And it's estimated that we're going to have about $250,000 in Title I funding for next year. It's also made up of Title II A funding. And our best estimate right now is about a $75,000 total for that. That would bring us up to three and a quarter. And then the last piece would be IDEA funding. And the estimate there is it could be upwards of $500,000. That would bring us up close to $800,000. Or let's for the sake of conversation, a plus $600,000 estimate over what we have now. Take that $600,000 and add it to the 38.2 million appropriation on the bottom line, which is where your new general fund, or excuse me, your new operating budget line total would be. That'd bring you up to almost $39 million worth of operating budget as compared to this year's 36.6.
But would it also increase your revenue line by 800?
It would. It would.
So... There would be an offsetting revenue and an increase in expenditure?
Yes. Yes. So again, it's how does the board want to position it? I think as we've discussed the issue in the superintendent's office, the estimate of about probably $600,000 to $700,000 worth of grant funding is... You know, that is as good as what we have now with the conservative estimate.
So just one, and I want to clarify this. I think you already have, and it's both for me and for anybody who's listening. To the extent that we receive more revenues than we project, we can't spend those.
For grants, we can spend those.
We could spend them.
Yes.
But it's a little bit difficult to change the direction of the ship halfway through the year. I mean, if you don't, if you don't have the monies, you can't spend them. If you don't project them, you can't spend them.
You can, because the school district continuously accepts grants as they're presented, applies for grants, and accepts them if they're awarded, which all add to the available funding to support grant programs. In that, the general fund, Philip, is a good example of revenues that come in over and above expectations cannot be used to supplement your operating budget or allow you to, excuse me, your general fund budget or allow you to spend more than what the actual appropriation is. We saw that last year where our unreserved fund balance and the deposit that the school board authorized into the contingency fund, the two and a half percent contingency fund, largely were the result of additional revenues that came in over and above projection. However, we could not spend those. We can spend over collections in food service and we can spend over collections in grant revenues. So... Board's call at a minute. One of the things that I took a look at were if we were to address Title I in Title II A funding, that would take us up to about $325,000 for a grant budget. If we were to decide that we want to recognize and project a portion of the IDEA grant, and I think the general consensus is that there's some comfort level now that we will see those monies next year where the threat of sequestration at this time last year, we didn't know what we were going to see. So it's really the board's call at this point as to which way you would like to go with revenue projections for grants. And remember, what you bring in is what you can spend. It's elastic.
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm looking ahead. The positions that we have a need to fill and that are included in the appropriation don't sort of magically change. But if there's a grant that comes up, and some of those are funded by grants that exist for specific purposes. To the extent that another grant shows up on the horizon that meets a specific function, we can expend those dollars. But those are different groups of grants, aren't they? I mean, IDEA is something that goes on and is relatively continuous.
Over a period of years.
Over a period of years. A one-time grant to meet a specific purpose is something different. And those can crop up literally at any time.
We saw those examples a couple of years ago with the Ed Jobs funding in the ADA.
Right.
Is that the right term here? The monies that we saw.
ARRA grant, right. And those probably offered more discretion than many of the grants that do surface. But if you look at the landscape of what changes in any given year and the number of grants that actually pop up that are not anticipated grants to fund specific kinds of purposes that we already know about and can reasonably project, how much money are we talking about in a given year? And let's set aside the staggering examples like the ARRA, which was a considerable amount of money.
What's coming to mind is a lot of what I'm going to call private grants. And these would be awards that come in from, you know, Triton Soccer as an example to help with maintenance costs of our playing fields. Things like that. They're not a significant amount of money.
Okay, so to the extent that there is a projection that is inaccurate and it's less than, for the most part, those revenues from, and let's use IDEA. Just because I want to make sure that I clearly understand. Let's use IDEA as an example. If you anticipate that you're going to get five and you get six, you can't suddenly miraculously spend that $100,000 in an appropriation that, or you wouldn't expect to, spend it for something that isn't already part of your appropriation.
First of all, and check me if I'm wrong, the IDEA grant would more than likely carry over into a following fiscal period.
It does now. We didn't historically used to be able to have carryover funds. We do now. But the other big thing, Philip, is you can't supplant your operating budget. What you couldn't do is you couldn't take a teaching position out of the general fund, cut that position, and pay for it with the new grant revenues. That's not legal.
Yeah. And that makes perfect sense. And I guess that sort of dovetails with the point. And the shorter distance to the point is, is that to the extent that our revenue projection is less than we actually receive, unless that is something that the board decides to put aside now that it is able to in a fund for future use, those are monies that go to reduce the tax rate.
Grants would not...
They're returned.
Oh, they're returned.
If they can't be carried over.
If they can't be carried over, they're returned.
Yep, food service budget you can retain.
Right.
We heard presentations earlier. And of course, the general fund budget that raised through taxation, we do have that new law that allows us to keep some of that. The balance or whatever isn't authorized for us to place into that contingency fund would be returned for tax relief.
Thank you for your patience and explanation.
Okay, the other piece that we talked about, or I saw you folks discussing on Monday, had to do with our tuition calculations. And what we've assumed here in purposes of this forecast is that we would see half of the enrollment that we currently have from Dunbarton this year. We would see half of those kids coming in next year. So that would have been 50% of grades nine, 10, 11, and 12. A recent change is that it appears that only children in grades 10, 11, and 12 will attend Goffstown High School next year. And there might be some slight change in revenue projection given that. But I think we have a pretty good number here for regular education tuition. We're talking about a net tuition impact, that $803,000. As our collection point goes down or our collection ability goes down, it becomes more expensive for Goffstown. It becomes more expensive for New Boston to send their children in here. So what we're really looking at in a net presentation is a loss on the Dunbarton end and a slight increase in revenues that we would see from New Boston as they are forced to pay a higher share in the way of a tuition cost to support operation of the middle school near the high school. That's the net number. Does that clear up the questions on tuition that were on the table from Monday?
As I recall, do you have any additional questions?
Might I ask if the board has any other general questions that we could provide? Any additional information or areas that you'd like any additional research on behalf of the administration? Bonnie's here as well. Thank you for being here, Bonnie, and Kate as well. So if there are questions that either of them could contribute, we would also like to get you whatever information the board is in need of for you to make decisions to move forward.
Can I just publicly thank both Ray and Kate for the electronic spreadsheets to help us
Good.
analyze this a little better?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kate.
I apologize. Suzanne Trembley called. She had wanted to be patched into the meeting and she's not connected. So I'm trying to connect her.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought she was on the phone over there.
She is not. That was the call. Hi, Sunny. It's Diane. Suzanne called me. I'm trying to patch her into the meeting. I'm going to put her on speaker. Shooting on answer. Yep, thank you. Okay. Thanks, Brian. I apologize for the delay. We did. I'm going to put you on speaker, Suzanne. Thank you. Yes, Suzanne. All right, we now have Suzanne Trembley connected.
May I ask a question?
Please. Yes, Suzanne.
The other night you were discussing a special warrant article for the $50,000 for grant matching fund.
High school drainage.
Yes.
Would not the reserve account be possible to get that $50,000?
I think it would, Suzanne. The provisions of the two and a half percent contingency fund is we could use that for emergency purposes. I think you could certainly make an argument that we've, since we've had a pattern of water intrusions here at the high school, that in fact that is an emergency. We would need approval by the Department of Ed for those expenditures, but I would not anticipate that being a roadblock for this purpose.
Terrific. You guys were also discussing the special election.
Yes.
And the role, your role at the polls that day.
Yes.
Quite honestly, having been a poll worker for almost 30 years, I can tell you that the selectmen were present at those elections, but really not involved in the election. You just have to be there.
Okay.
Does like Kathy Ball run the rest of it?
Yes, they do.
Is that how it works, even if it were a school district meeting and not a town?
You might want to check with her.
Yeah, no, we've already spoken with her and that answer is no. We would like, or the board should consider asking the selectmen if we may use Kathy's services to some extent, such as for processing the absentee ballot support. But no, as a general rule, Kathy is not expecting to support us 100% in this election. That is something that we need to handle with the moderator, with the school district clerk. We do have supervisors of the checklist that are ready to go. We'll need some poll workers.
Would she give us like a quick overview of exactly what's expected and what has been set up?
She has. We've had a couple meetings. In fact, that's what we were touching base with down there as well. But that is something that the board, we do need to speak about tonight. And since it is something that it's brought forth now, if anybody would like to make a motion regarding asking the selectmen placing a formal request of a selectman, now would be the time to do it.
I would make that motion that we request the services of Kathy Ball from the selectmen to help us with whatever she feels that she's capable of helping us with.
I think we need some specific...
I think we need specific...
Specific details. So I'm not sure that we're in a position right now to enumerate each and everything or sequester.
We may be. I just spent another...
We may be. We did just have a good conversation.
I just spent another 45 minutes.
So why don't you take...
Let me, before we make a motion, what I'd like to do is explain a little bit about what she's comfortable with and what she may not be comfortable with, what our school district clerk, Joanne Duffy, is comfortable with and with our moderator, Jim Raymond, is comfortable with.
And just had a curious, did you have any discussion? Do we have an assistant moderator?
We do not. There is a name that has been brought up. For the school? No, he's appointed at every district.
Right.
For that night. And so Jim has someone he plans on reaching out to. I don't want to bring the name up because he hasn't actually reached out to that person yet. Kathy is an elected official and has the opportunity to run what she does. But she's compensated by the town and her staff is compensated by the town. The town, she would be more comfortable if we reached out to the selectmen to request her services. In the law, we have to do absentee ballots, if any absentee ballots happen. And the law says that information must be contained within the statewide voter registration system. There's a couple of challenges. One, if somehow Joanne would be, Joanne Duffy, our school district clerk, would be having access to that system, she would then have to get trained and go through and make sure it's done correctly. And it's not very difficult, but you still have to go through all that training. It would be nice if we would reach out to the selectmen to ask if Kathy and her staff and/or her staff would be available to do this. I'm presupposing that I would also want to ask if this board would approve compensation to them for performing that service for us. I don't know whether we did think that that would be a freebie, but I'm presuming that we would compensate them for their working on behalf of the school. She would probably be comfortable sitting down with Jim Raymond and Joanne Duffy for a few hours to give them the list of normal things as she does, like setting up the poll, because the poll here is different than what it normally is. So the rail, what they call the rail, where the ballots have to stay within the process and procedures of getting the ballots to the polls, the process to close the ballots, bring them here, count them up, those kind of things, she is very versed at. And those are some of the things that would be handy to have her be able to answer the questions. Now, it's probably not anticipated that she would have to be present during the day. Because once those things are set up. Now, here's something else, posters. There are a number of posters that have to be posted. And if we don't have them up, then the Attorney General's office can come in there and...
Calm the fire the election.
All kinds of, I'm not sure if we go that far. But they, there are things like that that she would let us borrow if we needed to put them up. She's got some ideas on bringing the booths up, the tabletop. She's used to that. We don't know if we have enough tables here to actually use those tabletop voting booths, because you'd be taking them away potentially from students who would be eating them, eating off them, rather. So that's something that we would need to plan and look at.
So we have some logistics, but as far as what we would be asking the selectmen for is...
Her help in setting up those logistics and possibly even setting up, helping Jim set up the logistics of the actual voting center. Because you have, there are certain things that belong in the rail, certain things that belong outside the rail.
So is that a motion?
Now that I've explained all of it, do you want to put it in an encapsulated motion where you were thinking? Because you were looking for more detail or less detail?
Yeah, no, that, I think that it can be broad enough to request the assistance of the town court and her staff with the development of the plans necessary to execute the special election, the special meeting. And that way, we haven't confined it. We've left her some discretion and we can make a request of the selectmen that I think is digestible. And we can give it a little bit more form.
With potential compensation?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Actually, I believe the selectmen would pay her and we'd have to reimburse the selectmen.
That's on for the town. Is the compensation to the town?
Okay.
Yes.
So I have that motion. I had, I did not have a second for yours. So is that a motion you're making, Philip?
I would make that motion.
Philip would make that motion. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
By Jimmy. Do we have any further discussion?
Only that is, do you plan to go talk to the selectmen or how would you like to?
I plan to direct administration to do that on our behalf.
Okay.
So all in favor?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We are unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you for doing the legwork.
Right? Okay.
If I can just make a comment, Kathy Ball has been...
Can I ask, can I ask, tell you guys?
Hold on a second. Brian was speaking, Suzanne, and then...
The last time we had an election in town that was compared to this one was when we elected a charter commission. And fewer than 100 people showed up at Barton and around 200 at the high school. So bring your reading material and your playing cards and whatever, because it's a very long day.
Fair enough.
All right, thank you. Brian, you were saying?
I was just going to, I was just going to say I want the board to know how helpful and supportive Kathy Ball has been. She has been in constant contact with Denise. She's sat down with us. Ray and I talked to her over at the selectmen, at the town hall one day. She's come over on her lunch hour and given Denise supportive materials. She is just a tremendous resource. And we're very grateful of her intellect and how kind she's been with her time. So it's just a, she's a really impressive lady. She just really knows her stuff and we're lucky to have access to someone like that.
For sure.
And I would add, I see Mr. Cludier as a tremendous asset in this. Talk about somebody who understands the legal framework of how all the elections work. I think between those people and the legwork and the research that we're all doing, I just think we're fortunate to have people who are so knowledgeable.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Okay, all that being said, our business at hand is addressing our budget.
One short little comment?
Oh, Mr. Cludier.
You all should have received an email from the HAVA Health Test with a login, a login name and a password. So if you want to review any of the material that goes into running a election, that's available to you now to do with that.
And HAVA, just to let people know, is...
Help America Vote Act, Public Law 107 Dodge 252, 2002.
All right, thank you.
We'll get through it.
Once again.
And by the way, November 4th, December 4th, right?
My herding cats this evening, yes, December 4th.
And please don't do anything else that...
No roosters.
Right, okay. All right, so friends, the business at hand this evening is addressing our school district budget. We've now heard about revenues from Mr. Labor. We've had a chance to hear the presentations and have open discussion regarding the assorted different institutions within our district. I think the question before us to start is if anyone has any thoughts to share as far as where the proposed budget is now. If we are comfortable with what is in it or what is not in it and what direction... If we are comfortable with what is in it or what is not in it and what direction we feel we need to bring this budget.
A couple of quick observations.
Mm-hmm.
And I will tell you that there are two days of, there's not enough time since our last meeting to really go through this. But as we look through the six buckets that form the budget, district and schools, the difference is for each one of those buckets in terms of last year's or this year's appropriation and the anticipated appropriation vary pretty significantly. And it looks like the places that have, will have the most impact on the increase are in the district and in Mountain View. With Mountain View doing the most significant increase of all the others. I have, I mean, my next step is to go through each one of those in a little bit more detail as I follow through our presentations. But some of the things that are, that I noticed in Mountain View are things that we've foregone before in terms of staffing and figuring out how we deal with the problem and what that means, because it does have staff implications, staffing implications. And those are the things that really were the buckets and is in Mountain View, the specific areas that caused the most concern for.
Hello?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Am I being too quiet?
Yes.
Put your microphone in front of you.
I don't know if the microphone is.
I don't know if the microphone is.
Because we're not live. I don't know, I don't know if you want to try and phone towards us a little bit?
Okay, I put it over here so we would have a microphone.
Well, that's fine, right?
I mean, in fairness, I don't know that I'm in a position to make any recommendations without going into the detail more, and I did some work on it last night, but not really enough.
You know, the case with Mountain View, I think historically that school's line, the budget, has been really pinched for a lot of years, you know, the high school has gotten curriculum or whatnot, the elementary schools have gotten. And here we have, you know, the middle school that's kind of gotten squeezed by those sides. And I feel as though that's what we're seeing now with this budget this year.
As a general comment, just looking at the numbers, I'm looking at the difference between our current budget we're working under and the budget for twenty fourteen fifteen. And there's a substantial total general fund increase of two point two million dollars. But then, what, I'm glad to have the spreadsheet so I can look at the difference between those that are part of the default budget. And I have to presume that the default budget has most of the salaries and the benefits that are part of that adjustment. And that difference is only five hundred thousand. So of the two point two million dollars, there's only five hundred thousand there, that's a discretionary difference. And so if I can call the undiscretionary is like one point seven five million, is that numbers kind of jive? And so those are things that are going and modifying and changing that because of the default budget calculation, we have no control.
Yeah, we do, we've got a cushion of about five hundred thousand, if that's what you want to call it, you know, where we are. And the question is, as far as programming and services and whatnot, where we want to go within that.
There is, I want to make sure that I understand. I'm going to say something that is, it is a question, even though it may sound affirmative. A piece of that is the increase in the proportionate share of the SAE budget part of the default?
It is, it is.
Okay.
To the tune of about three hundred thousand dollars.
About three hundred five thousand is increased from last year to this year, budget to budget.
Okay. All right. Thanks, I guess. I guess it wasn't a thing, I'm sorry.
So did anything stand out to anybody as far as something that may not belong in the budget? Is there something that they would want to see or do they have, do we have concerns?
I think I'm one step away from answering my question.
Okay.
One of the, I don't know if this is a concern or not, but Brian mentioned several times that we have this, our contingent, our unreserved funds, our unreserved reserve fund balance and we have the anticipated savings from teachers retiring, which was an optimistic note, but I heard it several times. And I'm just wondering, is this, I mean, is the money there, you know, if we're thinking about anticipated faculty, teachers retiring, is the money there, is there enough money there to cover all the areas that we want to use that money for?
From my perspective, what I was trying to do by bringing that information forth to the board was to really be transparent about two significant areas that have contributed historically to the unreserved fund balance. And Ray and Kate did a lot of work pulling together the supplemental backup information I provided you with in the first evening when you were presented the budget. Part of what's in this budget this year are, as I shared before, no computers, no iPads, no smart boards, we stripped all of the technology pieces that the board has been committed to for instructional purposes in teaching and learning. We removed those pieces from the budget. There are software lines, there are license fees for software programs that we have, there are replacements for computer parts that break, et cetera. But we had requests for new computers, we had requests for new monitors, all of those were removed from the budget. With the premise being that historically, we have seen teacher turnover money come back. We have a top step teacher retire, we hire an entry level teacher in their place, there's a salary differential that we recoup. That's happened every year. What's different, I think, with this budget presentation is you haven't talked about it. So we wanted to bring that forth to you. Health insurance, GMR, on average, has come in about, I think, three percent historically over the last thirteen years. So our guaranteed maximum price and the actual rate we pay over a thirteen year average is three percent less. That three percent equates to savings for us. So part of the way that we built the budget was to focus on the priorities that we thought needed to be focused on. Safety, teaching and learning, special education and facilities. We tried to focus on those, but that's really why we brought forth that kind of a model change, was I think it's a different way to think about it, because we don't have to budget for things that you may have money to do some capital projects that the board could consider at a later point in time.
So another way to achieve the same result would be to include all of those things in the budget based upon their need and their priority and then to reduce by some percentage accounting for risk, the allocation of dollars necessary to fund hiring staff.
I think there are a number of different ways you could do it.
Yeah, but arguably, you end up in about the same place, it's just that your decision-making model looks different. Because you look at what you have at various points in the year in terms of meeting specific kinds of needs and we talked about technology.
Yeah, and I think part of the way that we built the budget this year was we took all the requests from the principals and after Ray calculated the default budget, we reduced the so-called principals' budget all the way down to default. We took it down to default and then said, what are our priorities that we would add back into this budget? And that is the delta of the five hundred thousand that Mr. Cloutier spoke to, that money. So I guess the direction we might be looking for and how we can best support the board would be to give us some direction in terms of the overall budget total, the overall budget amount over default or some specific projects that you think we either haven't included or perhaps should remove from what's been proposed to you. And I think we're happy to go back and make recommendations of how we can get to whatever number you want us to come in at. And again, go back to that teacher turnover money. If you think about the position requests that you have before you, you have library paras at Mountain View, you have a teacher at Mountain View, special ed teacher at Bartlett, you have an extension of custodian days at Bartlett, we had half of a library media specialist at Bartlett. Some combination of those positions could be arguably removed from the proposed budget. When we see what teacher turnover money looks like at the end of the year or into next year, when we see health insurance savings, you could potentially revisit those. I mean, really, I can't stress enough, we're trying to be as transparent with the money and the options as we possibly can.
I personally thought that what the principals asked for really was very little.
Well, that's just what got to the board, though.
I realize that, I realize that, but what came to us in the presentation that we heard, you know, there wasn't a whole lot of wiggle room in what I would think was stuff that we really should be cutting out of those.
Well, your principals get it, they understand the economic times that we're in, they understand the burden of property taxes, they understand what we're up against.
I think they put a lot of time in it and a lot of thought to those ends and came up with a very workable budget within the parameters of, you know, it's a bad economy, tax rates and those kinds of things, I, you know, I think they did an excellent job. And I don't see a whole lot of things to be taken out that would add up to keeping it the same as a default. You know, I'm not sure what we would.
Can you, is it easy to push a couple of buttons and give me an idea what that number looks like? If we looked at the positions that you just described?
Which, the ones that we've added in?
Yeah.
So that's the, that's our spreadsheet, Kate?
So just the new requests, the class of the new requests?
Yep, and any associated benefits?
While she's pulling it up, I'll do them from memory, and I'll probably forget a few. But Bartlett had a half of a library media specialist, we had increase in custodial days, we had one full-time special education teacher at Bartlett, Maple didn't have anything.
Did we also discuss having, I don't know if that's in the number, hold on.
Mountain View asked for two part-time library media paraprofessionals. One eighth grade, they actually asked for more, but asked for one eighth grade teacher because of the class size is currently projected to be twenty-six students for eighth grade next year. Now granted, there will be some classes that are a little smaller because algebra.
This is number four. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could please just run me for a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time too, I'd like to open this meeting to public comment, but I see no public. And so we will continue on with our board discussion regarding the proposed twenty fourteen fifteen school district budget. Ray, you have some information for us on revenues?
On revenues, yes, there were a couple of questions that were introduced on Monday evening. One of them had to do with grant programs and the funding level that we were projecting for them. We came in with a conservative revenue estimate of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for grant programs for next year. Remember that grants are what we call an enterprise fund, what you collect is what you can spend. Grants do not have any tax impact, but they do tend to increase our bottom line for the total operating budget. Operating budget is made up of the general fund, that is the taxation piece. It's made up of food service fund, our Fund Twenty-One, which is, again, another enterprise fund. What is brought in in the way of revenue is all that the program can spend and grants are pretty much the same thing. The, when thinking about grants, it's, I don't know if we want to call it an art as much as a science. It isn't absolutely necessary to be dead on with respect to what the real toll is going to be, again, given the parameters of only being able to spend what you bring in. Over the past couple of years, when we were taking a look at sequestration and its potential effects and the like, we, as a group, decided that we were going to become more conservative in our estimates of grant revenues. There was a concern that was introduced with respect to employees being paid through grants. And I guess that is true, however, the employees are paid through the grant or through Fund Twenty-Two and are not captured in the Fund Ten or the general fund budget, so there's no exposure there. If you do have your revenue sheets, I'd ask you to take a look at them and take a look at the bottom line, the appropriation lines. This year, our total appropriation is thirty-six million, six hundred and sixteen thousand ninety-one dollars. That's what we're operating under or with for the entire operating budget. Next year, the fourteen fifteen school year, with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar estimate for grants, we're increased to thirty-eight million, two hundred seventeen thousand dollars. So we're up well over a million and a half dollars in appropriation level. If we were to increase grant funding, and I'm just going to throw out some numbers here. Grants right now are made up of, pretty much of Title One funding and it's estimated that we're going to have about two hundred fifty thousand dollars in Title One funding for next year. It's also made up of Title Two A funding. And our best estimate right now is about a seventy-five thousand dollar total for that, that would bring us up to three and a quarter. And then the last piece would be IDEA funding. And the estimate there is it could be upwards of five hundred thousand dollars. That would bring us up close to eight hundred thousand dollars. Or, let's, for the sake of conversation, a plus six hundred thousand dollar estimate over what we have now. Take that six hundred thousand and add it to the thirty-eight point two million appropriation on the bottom line, which is where your new general fund, or excuse me, your new operating budget line total would be. That'd bring you up to almost thirty-nine million dollars worth of operating budget as compared to this year's thirty-six point six.
But would it also increase your revenue line by eight hundred?
It would, it would.
So, so there would be an offsetting revenue and an increase in expenditure?
Yes, yes. So. So, uh, again, it's, how does the board want to position it? I think as we've discussed the issue in the, in the superintendent's office, the estimate of about, probably six to seven hundred thousand dollars worth of grant funding is, you know, that is as good as what we have now with the conservative estimate.
So, so just one, I want to clarify this, I, I think you already have, um, and it's both for me and for anybody who's listening. To the extent that we receive more revenues than we project, we can't spend those.
For grants, we can spend those.
We, we could spend them.
Yes.
Um, but it's, it's, it's a little bit difficult to change the direction of the ship halfway through the year. I mean, if, if you don't, if you don't have the monies, you can't spend them, if you don't project them, you can't spend them.
You can, because the school district continuously accepts grants as they're presented, applies for grants and accepts them if they're awarded, which all add to the available funding to support grant programs. In that, the general fund, Philip, is a, is a good example of revenues that come in over and above expectations cannot be used to su- supplement your operating budget or allow you to, excuse me, your general fund budget or allow you to spend more than what the actual appropriation is. We saw that last year where our unreserved fund balance and the deposit that the school board authorized into the contingency fund, the two and a half percent contingency fund, largely were the result of additional revenues that came in over and above projection. However, we could not spend those. We can, we can spend over collections in food service and we can spend over collections in grant revenues. So, uh, board's call, Adam, one of the things that I took a look at, uh, were if we were to address Title One in Title Two A funding, that would take us up to about three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a grant budget. If we were to decide that we want to recognize and project a portion of the IDEA grant. And I think the general consensus is, is that there's some comfort level now that we will see those monies next year where the threat of sequestration at this time last year, we didn't know what we were going to see. So it's really the board's call at this point, um, as to which way you would like to go with revenue projections for grants. And remember, what you bring in is what you can spend.
Adequate job of managing the rest of the expenditures in this budget and in the next so that we can achieve the objectives, but we're gonna take this stuff off the table in terms of money. Which is, which is not what I'm in favor of doing, what I'm in favor of doing is saying, look, you have a good educa-, a good and sound educational plan here and this is what it would take to finance it. But I really, you know, in fairness, I realize that we have one meeting really to make a decision. I'd like to, the, the two things that I'd like to go, I personally would like to go through is, is, um, have a quick look at the spreadsheets and, um, go through Mountain View and the district and, and see, because those are the places where at least for appearances, we see the greatest change. And to look at those and, and then come back, ask a couple of questions and make a decision. That's, again, that's just for me.
No, I mean, I think we are in the conversation getting to a point where, where that's making a whole lot of sense, but we do need to be cognizant of the fact that Monday's the day.
Right.
Um, and so we really have to, to get this done and do it thoughtfully and, and really buckle down here and, and get this done. Uh, I do have a question for you, Brian, um, pertaining to the bubble. You've got that small eighth grade class that's jumping up to the high school. Um, we are anticipating some population decrease by virtue of, of Dunbarton students, you know, in the high school. Um, what is that doing to class sizes? Are we able to, as much as we're asking to add an HQT eighth grade teacher, is there gonna be any staffing offset? I don't remember seeing any staffing offset here in the high school, knowing that you have a smaller class coming in and then, then a little bit of a population decrease. I know it's not a huge population decrease, but I just, it's a question that I think we need to, to look at and whatever the answer is, it is, but I'm just curious to know what, where, where we are with that.
Well, first of all, it's been hard to predict what exactly the Dunbarton numbers will look like.
Yeah.
Um, after having extensive conversations with Mr. McBride, Mrs. McCann and Mrs. Rogers, the tough thing about Dunbarton is the numbers aren't big enough at the high school level to say, you lose twenty-five kids in a grade and that equals a teacher or a half a teacher. And when it's spread over such a large sampling of classes, you end up, certainly your, your class sizes here at the high school will go down and class size at the high school in general is variable. You have some small classes, for whatever reason, schedule, the frequency of courses being offered, the nature of the class, you have some larger classes. I, I think if there was to be cuts, if that's the direction we were going in, I probably, um, it couldn't be the elementary level, you already see our class sizes, it absolutely couldn't be Mountain View. Mountain View's class sizes are bigger than both the elementary and the high school level, it would have to be here. If we didn't, for example, if we didn't get the eighth grade position, what, what we might do as an option would be to come back and look at what content area would we be looking for? And could we consolidate collapsed classes here at the high school without compromising the base educational program that we offer? I don't want to take away AP, I don't want to take, take away Team One, you know, so I don't want to impact our above-level learners, I don't want to impact our kids who maybe struggle a little more because we have supports and services for that entire continuum. But, but that's where it would be. Um, so Frank and Kim did not feel comfortable saying the loss of Dunbarton means we can give up a teacher. Or if we had, um, say, a high school teacher retire, could we not fill that position? And then that would give us a slot, a teaching position we could repurpose to Mountain View, which would then allow us to bring those class sizes down at Mountain View. And, and again, I, I, I guess I'd say, over the last five years, the work that we've done, either having, we've had a, we haven't passed a budget in five years. You know, so if we think about, I think the last budget we passed was in two thousand and eight, I think that was the last one. And then every other year, the budget was less than default or it was default. And so we've cut a lot of positions over the years, you'll remember, we've cut administrators, we've cut secretaries, we've cut teachers, we've cut custodians, we've cut an awful lot of positions and we figure out a way to make it work. Part of my struggle is we cut those positions and then we had three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars of teacher turnover money or healthcare money. You know, so you, you can take a few risks, a few gambles and you can sort of count on that you're gonna have changes in those two areas. So it could be, you know, if, if the board wants to think about the five hundred thousand, just a little editorial, I'm happy to stop at any point. But if you think about the five hundred thousand, if we were to say seventy-five of that would be safety projects relating to cameras, you add another twenty-five for the interior doors, so about a hundred thousand of that, those safety items, we could look to conceivably do this year, which would allow us to remove them from the general fund. And I think we'd still be in that unreserved fund balance window that we're looking for. You then-
I, 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 and I think Dan, I'm gonna credit you with this, tell me if I'm wrong, has, has made this observation before. I don't, I think I would prefer to leave the decisions over the use of the allocation to the professionals. And, and so if, if the question that the board answers is, um, do you want to go with the document that's in front of you based upon the plan that we've presented? The answer could be three things, it could be yes, it could be yes, but we'd like you to spend less money to accomplish it, figure it out, or it could be no. And if it's no, then you, then, then we, we're put in a position of, of offering some suggestions. I'm not sure that any of, I'm not sure that we want to offer suggestions, I think that what you've laid out for us is the opportunity to respond in a way that says, um, here's what the board wants to spend. It sounds, it sounds like there's a way that you can manage whatever that change is, if that's what the board wishes to do, as opposed to us saying, this is where we don't want to fund.
Okay. Um, does anyone else have anything to add?
Well, from this particular budget that's been presented to us, it is somewhat, as I began a little while ago, there's that five hundred thousand that's there. The other money that's between the two budgets is for items that are part of the default budget that are just already pre-contractual agreements that have been done over the years and are just natural modifications. There are sometimes, though, certain things that we can look at and say, I don't want to fund that. And there have been times, more often than not, that when I see the expenditures later on, they're there, but something else didn't happen. So by de facto, what we were saying, this is the level of funding that we're comfortable with and the budget, even though it is where it is, it got enacted the way you needed to run the school for that particular fiscal year. I particularly, when it comes to safety items, if we have the means to do it now, it doesn't make sense for me to put that off if we can do it now. So that would be a, a no-brainer for me. I mean, the doors, the locks on the interior, that is one thing that, you know, it's kind of crazy when you have to go outside the classroom to do what you need to secure the inside of the classroom. That's, um, that would, for me, is almost more important than the outside cameras, but the outside cameras are pre-, are preventive and, and they help to solve.
And the cameras are interior as well.
Interior cameras as well. I'm not too fond necessarily of announcing where all the cameras are or whether they're good or bad or if they're working or not working at this current time. Um, because that doesn't make sense to me either, we just say, we, we have some upgrades that we need to do. In fact, it might be one of the R C ninety-one topics that could be discussed in non-public security methods. So, but that, he said, so, you know, that hundred thousand, if, if there's a way to squeak it by in the current year, that could be a kudos for, I think, everybody involved.
Okay. So, are we in a spot where we are looking to go home, do some work? We can be here next Monday knowing full well that we gotta get this taken care of?
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, we'll do the homework, everybody's gonna do the homework that they need to do in order to, to get this taken care of to our satisfaction?
We do also have a few edits that as, um, as we were putting this together, there are a few things, some, some typos that we found, I've, I've been marking them so we'll have, um, maybe a, a, a few, you know, to clean it up, there were some-
There was a couple of, a couple of numbers that were double and that kind of thing too, so that there would be-
That we, um, we made some mistakes on it.
If I happen to complete the project of doing the expenses by function, I'll send it to you.
Please, thank you.
If anybody else is looking for that, I'll send it to you all, it'd be a public document, because this is a public document.
Would you send it to, to Ray and myself as well?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll have to write that down.
So Monday, we're expecting to finalize the budget, so it will be on target to be delivered to the budget committee on Wednesday.
If any questions come up between now and Monday, please feel free to call or to email us.
All right. Do you have any other business that may legally come before the meeting? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
By Dan, second by Philip, all in favor?
Aye.
We are unanimous, thank you very much.